Really just reach wouldn't have salad and whatnot, but they figured it out.
Well, good morning. Welcome to the November 19th edition of our regular Board of Trustees meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order. If we'd all rise, trustee Anderson is going to lead us in the process.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Roll call, Ellie, we do have a call. Additions and deletions to the agenda for today, Wednesday, November 19th. Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved by trustee Williams and seconded by trustee Anderson to approve the agenda for the regular Gillette Community College District Board of Trustees meeting held today, Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Excellent, motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda for Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. Would anybody like anything pulled up or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
With that, I'll move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by trustee Wassburger and seconded by trustee Palmer to approve, excuse me, the consent agenda for the regular GCCD Board of Trustees meeting held today, Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Uh, moving on. For the good of the district, good news from the trustees. What good news do we have from the trustees?
Well, I might say, and maybe it's later on, but college did make a fine choice in our new rodeo coach.
Excellent.
Casey Ray will do an excellent job for the program.
So, former assistant coach Casey Ray Sellers is now the head coach of the Gillette rodeo. Excellent.
One of two female rodeo coaches in the state of Wyoming.
Excellent.
Chair McGrath, I guess for me, I'd just like to say as we descend upon this Thanksgiving that I want to say how thankful I am that we all are here and our supporter college, thankful for all of our faculty and staff, their leadership, and moreover, thank you for each one of you in helping us lead this college forward.
Well stated, thank you. Any other good news?
I'd just like to say I thoroughly enjoyed our retreat on last week on Wednesday and thought we had a wonderful facilitator and a lot of stuff done.
Honestly, one of the best ever. It was absolutely excellent, and that includes my past leadership retreats. This was, it was amazing.
Only I had to add to that is, in my comments, I'm probably the only person ever to say we could have used a little more time.
Yes.
And the newspaper did a good job.
Yes. Any other? I would add, on a personal level, my daughter was voted her second team, second time for all-state volleyball, and she was also voted the Defensive Player of the Year for the state. She worked hard coming back off the torn ACL, so. Any other good news? Good news from the college, Dr. Overlander.
Chair McGrath, trustees, we have a lot of really great news to share. I'm going to start first that the foundation is having their scholarship dinner on Thursday, tomorrow evening, from 5:30 to 7:30. I'm going to pass around some thank you notes to you from students who have been recipients of trustee and board scholarships. This is a fabulous event if you happen to attend it. I'll pass the invitation around too, but we have a wonderful evening where we recognize scholarship from board winners and also the donors, and it's just a lovely event. So if you can be there, we look forward to seeing you. A couple other things, Tony Geist, who is our machine tool technology instructor, caught me in the hall as I was coming in and shared with me that we had several students who were formally announced that Gillette College Skills USA Officer Training, along with our advisor Tony Geist and one other active member, has earned their distinguished Wyoming Statesman Award. They received both the official certificate and the palpin recognition of their achievement. And what you have to do to receive this certificate is you have to have mastery of Skills USA as demonstrated by deep understanding of the organization's mission, vision, and values. Leadership development showed through their growth as emerging leaders, responsible citizens, and future professionals, and civic awareness as displayed through their understanding of civic responsibility and their engagement within their communities. And so we're so proud of our Skills USA and our advisor Tony Geist, who does such a phenomenal job with that group. So that happened earlier this week. Chantel Moore, our executive director, our senior director of HR, has begun and launched a program called Build Bridge Builders. This is a group that ties right into our succession planning, and it's future leaders of Gillette College. We have 10 individuals from Gillette College participating in that. I had the opportunity to visit with that group and talk about my own leadership journey and my vision for leadership at Gillette College earlier this week, and so it's a dynamic group, and we can't wait to see how that that plays out. My office hosts a new employee lunch every fall and spring, and so we were able to hold that earlier a couple weeks ago. It's always fun to bring new employees together. They get to meet some of their new colleagues. We invite the supervisors to introduce and welcome them officially to the campus. Yesterday at the city council meeting, our esteemed student body, student government, student senate president gave an update to the city, and she just did a phenomenal job, and so we're so proud of her leadership and her willingness to step forward and provide reports fresh off of a leadership conference that she's going to talk about. We're excited she's here. She's headed home for Thanksgiving after she presents to you later today. In addition, the energy city voices sang the national anthem, led the pledge, sang the national anthem, and then a couple other songs, and certainly well-received by the council. So those are the good news from the college I have. I would invite PMRD, their other vice presidents, if you have any other additional good news to share with the trustees. Alright, trustees, that's our good news that we have for this meeting.
Excellent. Any questions on any of that? Alright. Moving on, organizational reports. President report, President Overlander.
Chair McGrath, trustees, I am going to yield my time because I have so much more to share as the as the agenda moves on, and we have spent a great amount of time together today talking about all the work we're currently engaged in. So I will yield my time. Back to the chair.
Thank you. That's the first time.
I mean, I can keep talking.
Moving on, Gillette College Advisory Board report, Chair Scott Dergens.
I'm going to give notice. Good to see everybody. The advisory board is doing well. We're staying busy with our two committees, the curriculum and then the the mutual workforce committee is doing well. They've been really active there. We met with President Overlander and Dr. Spriggs, and we've kind of got a plan charted out. I'm sure she shared some of that stuff. Kind of fun to do that, and then also, coming up, we got officers to deal with. See what kind of strong arm we can do to get people in offices. And then we also have some members that could be coming off, but based on our bylaws, they can go another four years. So we'll see if they want to stay or not, but that'll be the next challenge in the coming year.
Excellent.
That's it.
Well, thank you. Any questions for Chair Dergens? Okay, wow. Moving on to the institutional research follow-up, Mr. Roger Humphrey and Dr. Yvonne Carter.
Right, thank you, Chair McGrath, trustees. We wanted to follow up with some information from last month that you asked in terms of some of our course enrollment and the dynamics of students that are in, our Gillette students that are enrolled in what we call Gillette courses, which are section 30, and students that are enrolled in what we call section 01s, which are owned by the Northern Wyoming Community College District, which are shared. So I'm very pleased to have Dr. Carter with me today, and she's going, I'll do the first part, and then I'll turn that over to her in terms of some of the implications and so forth. So just to give you an overview of from last year, academic year 25, the next slide, this gives you an idea of the breakdown of enrollment courses. And that is courses by section. So when you think of English 10-10, there is one course of English 10-10. There are multiple sections in English 10-10, both what we would call section 30 and section 01, and also our concurrent. So as you can look on the slide or the pie graph, almost 55% of our students were enrolled in sections of courses that were through the Northern Wyoming Community College District, what we would call section 1 up to 30. And the students in the light blue are our concurrent students. Those are the students who were enrolled in the concurrent sections that were offered at Campbell County High School, Thunder Basin, and Wright. Not as many in Wright, but primarily Campbell County High School and Thunder Basin. The orange, the 36, it's close, I think it's maybe 37, 36.8 are what we consider orange courses, and those are called our section 30 that are taught here on campus. So that gives you a breakdown of those 693 courses slash sections that were provided last year. Pretty amazing when you think about that, almost 700 course sections that we have students enroll. Any questions before we move forward with that?
I know.
Okay, the other slides coming forward gives you the enrollment, just the students that were enrolled in those different categories of courses and sections. And so you can see for the most part, 38.7% of our students were enrolled in 30 sections, what we would consider Gillette sections, 34% in Sheridan online sections, 27% of those students were our concurrent that were enrolled in those courses offered at the high schools. Any of the dual students fall in either the orange or the green. They're considered the dual flow into that because they're taught either by our faculty or by the faculty at Sheridan. So we had about 4,100 students, a little over 4,100 students enrolled, and that is at the end of the term, not at the beginning of the term. The next slide gives you an idea by the spring of the enrollment, a little bit heavier in terms of the section 01s in the green, the Sheridan sections. The number of the 30 sections really didn't change a whole lot. The concurrent sort of narrows a little bit because many of those courses are offered for a full year. So for example, if Bio 10-10 is offered in the fall, it's only counted in the fall, it's not counted in the spring. So that sort of gives you an idea why there's a little bit of a decrease of concurrent courses. So questions in terms of any of the the composition of from a 10,000-foot view when we look at enrollment in the course and the course types?
Okay, questions, trustees?
Chair McGrath. Roger, on the slide where it talks about the 4,158 students, are those duplicate?
Those are unduplicated counts. I'm sorry. The students were only counted once, and in those numbers. The, so we gave, provided a little bit of a 10,000-foot view. Our next slides go through really looking at it a little bit more granular by a program. And so we pick business for an example. These courses that are listed in the table are what we consider core courses. So if I'm a business major, I have to complete these courses. The section 30s are the courses that were offered here at Gillette College. And so it gives you an idea of the number of students that were in the sections, the grand total of those students, and then the number of credits. So if you go down all the way to the bottom, you can see we had about 178 students that were enrolled in section 30 business, accounting, econ, management, marketing, and so forth, required in that program. And that basically created about 710 credits. So if you look at 710 credits and you time it and times it by either in-state tuition, out-of-state tuition, or WUI, plus fees, that would give you an idea about how much tuition and fees. You know, if you took, just hypothetically, if those were all in-state students, that 710 would be times 162, it would give you an idea about the amount of revenue that that would create. And again, that all changes depending upon the residency of the student. These courses were delivered on face-to-face by our instructor last year. The next slide gives you an idea of these same courses, and I apologize for the size. Okay, they're like I'm at the eye doctor and you're testing one of those. So these are our students, Gillette location students, that were enrolled in those same courses, but those are 01 sections that were taught online through Sheridan. So in essence, Sheridan owns those courses, and as you can see, the total down on the bottom, the number of students, and about 1,250 credits that were accumulated. I believe in our current MOU, we receive 50% of that revenue back in terms of tuition and fees. So you can see the amount of students that with either scheduling conflicts, lack of having more instructors, adjuncts, and so forth, that the imbalance between the 30 sections and the 01 sections. There are no concurrent sections in this data set.
Trustee Williams?
Roger, what is the amount of dollars that we get back? And what is the amount of dollars Sheridan gets?
Chair McGrath, trustee Williams, I would say if you took the 1,250, let's say if you just times it by times that are multiplied by 100, and that'd be about 125,000, we would get half of that, 125,000. Okay, that flows back.
Mr. Chairman, Director Humphries, so these are online courses that are running through Northern Wyoming Community College District, or share. Are any of these courses taught by Gillette faculty?
Chair McGrath, trustee Palmer, these courses specifically, no. We do have some of our faculty that teach some of the math courses, some of the English courses that are online, but they're limited in terms of the number of our faculty teaching online sections.
Sorry, what is the follow-up then too is, so this is a significant number of individuals that are taking online classes. Are we preparing ourselves, what's the accreditation it's reached that we can we can cover, or we can manage this amount of online classes that are that I guess are being requested and being people are enrolling in?
Chair McGrath, trustee Palmer, great question. We are looking at this by program and by prefix, and what courses can we bring back? And Dr. Carter will talk a little bit about some of the things that we're beginning to look at. I think that's a great question that segues into our next slide. And so what we did, we put our heads together, and this is, what if we were able to pull 50% of those students from that prior slide, and we created an additional 30 sections? So if you look at accounting 10-10, rather than having one section, maybe we create two. And then looking at what type of staffing implications would that be? Facilities, resources. But if you look at this, being able to recapture the number of credits just in those sections, that would be 510 or 513, I believe, credits, and additional 161 students. And that would be revenue that would not be shared or split. This would require, this model would require additional faculty to deliver that. The one that is in green is sort of nebulous because I'm not really sure, based on the numbers, we would create another section, but one of the things we want to look at also is are we backfilling and filling our sections, our fill rates? It isn't just creating two sections of accounting 2010 with 10 students in each. How do we, how do we fill our fill rates in our existing courses? And then on top of that, what are other offerings? So for example, if you're out of sequence and students don't, not everybody follows that pattern perfectly. So we offer 2010 in the fall. We do not offer it in the spring because our current faculty cannot teach that because it's not within the number of workloads. So many of those students that need to take 2010 have to take it in the spring, which their only choice right now is to take that online through Sheridan. So this gives you a little bit of a recapture. If we only recaptured 50% of those students in that prior, knowing that we're not going to get all of them. There are some people that like an online delivery and so forth, and I know Dr. Spriggs is working with Sheridan in terms of the complexities of how we can begin to offer online courses, and Dr. Carter will allude to some of the hybrid models we're looking at. But this gives you sort of an idea of within one specific program, the number of courses and course sections that potentially we could recoup and bring back, which helps our students, it helps us fill our courses, and it allows our students to continue to stay on campus and have that campus experience. The next slide is giving you an idea by different academic areas. And so is this just a problem and isolated with that, within accounting or within business? No, so I pulled two examples of econ, just the courses, and you can see in that, in that table to the right, we offer two sections of econ. I believe there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 8 sections. So the six other sections are taught online by Sheridan instructors. And so that gives you an idea, just again, an idea by that course prefix. You can see the similar pattern with psychology. The ones that are bold are the ones that we teach, the ones that are not bolded are the ones that are taught through Sheridan. I believe Dr. Machio taught one, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Spriggs, one or two sections online last year.
Psych.
Of psych.
Yes.
Yeah. So her numbers, I can't remember which sections those were, but part of her workload is that she taught, I believe, a fall online and a spring online. So our task is really looking at what are our strategies to be able to move forward, to try to migrate more of those courses and those course sections back to what we would call a 30 section, and then really investigating the ramifications and implications, because it isn't easy as just bringing them back. You have to figure out who's going to teach them, how does it impact the schedule, all of the different pieces. That is really a piece that we've asked the faculty to look at, primarily Dr. Carter. This is really in the arts and sciences school and the strategic planning that she's doing with all of the departments. So I can answer any of the questions on the numbers, and then I'm going to turn over to Dr. Carter some of the things that we've discussed, the implications, strategies, and plans moving forward.
Thanks for Mr. Humphrey. Alright, we'll turn over to Dr. Carter.
So thank you, Roger, for pulling all that data together because that really helps us see kind of the big picture and helps us look at some of the questions that we are posing and thinking about because we do really want to try to offer more to the students, and especially over the next couple of years, we have time to plan for these things. And so as Roger said, we have talked about the topics on this slide multiple times because there's a thousand ways to look at this, and so we're presenting this to you so you have an idea that we are really looking ahead to try to offer the best mix of classes and what the students want. And I know that a lot of students would like to take face-to-face, but as Roger said, many of them cannot because of their schedules or because of when they can come to the class or not. So some of the things we looked at, again, is staffing, and that means faculty. And typically, faculty can teach five courses a semester. And so that would give us, if we did add even one business teacher, a lot more options for students to take some of those classes that they currently have to take online. And I think I'm here because I'm the dean of arts and sciences, and most of these online courses are under my purview. And so when you look at what Roger showed you with psychology, but that could be for any of the arts and sciences kinds of courses that happen, whether it would be gen ed kinds of courses, because a lot of our students take online courses because we do not have the faculty here to teach them. And, you know, that's the way it's been, and I think it gives us a chance to look at what could be and to plan for some of the budgets that are going to be impacted, and especially the budget for faculty would be the greatest, especially if we include full-time faculty in this mix. So do you have any questions yet? Those are the big things. Those are the big things of what we are able to offer and who's going to be able to offer them. The other things.
Sorry, do you have a question?
Chair McGrath, if I can ask a question, I mean, you made the statement that about what the what the students want. How are you assessing and gaining input from the students then to know their preference of online or whatever? I'm just curious.
That's a great question, trustee. We are hoping to have focus sessions with the students because we know that a lot of students take online courses, and I think that sadly, some students think they're easier, and that's not always the case because you really have to be motivated and interested and push yourself to make sure you complete those because you don't have a teacher pushing you necessarily. So, but that's a great question because, as Roger said, not everybody's going to want to and/or be able to take a face-to-face class, and we know that, which is why even if we estimate that between 25, 30% of the students would, if you remember those numbers, that's pretty significant. So from 700 kinds of numbers down to a quarter of that would still be an impact for us and a benefit in a couple ways. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Just as a point of clarification for myself and the trustees, Gillette College can offer online courses. Once you get over that course, 50% of the course being offered online becomes a program. That's when we have to get into the SARA approvals and that type of thing. Now, when we did the original negotiation with MWCCD, we agreed that we would split online location Gillette students 50%. So now it's time to relook at this and reexamine, right? But just know that we can offer online courses. We just can't, we can't have approvals, a substantial change once we get accredited to do a program online. Does that make sense?
Individual courses online, but we can't offer a complete program?
Until we go through a substantial change and have SARA agree. Until we go through a substantial change and have Sarah agree.
Mr. Paul, Mr. Chairman, um, Dr. Curran. In a perfect world, where funding wasn't an issue. Uh, I guess I have a couple of questions is, I guess start off with maybe back up just a second. So how many, what's our ratio of full-time faculty to adjunct faculty?
In arts and sciences?
Arts and sciences. And I won't hold you this, but just roughly.
Well, our adjunct faculty don't teach as many courses. And so there are fifteen and not all, all of those teach in the gen ed area. So let's say twelve. So there's twelve full-time faculty. And we have about in the gen ed, seven adjuncts that might teach one or two classes. So I can't do the math.
Two-thirds, a third, so two-thirds full-time.
I don't even, I would say maybe thirty percent is adjunct and, and probably not even that many. Because there's so many more classes that a full-time teacher could teach.
So, so then to my next, so then in a perfect world where we had plenty of facility space. It, it just seems to me as the three largest community of Wyoming with as much expertise as we've had that's recently retired and knowledgeable individuals out there. That, and I think, and we used to be, I mean, primarily an adjunct faculty campus because we didn't have that. That there's an opportunity to really uh, recruit a highly, highly talented, highly skilled adjunct faculty. And if we did that and provided, had space to do that with, I know that's an issue, but hopefully the NC building will help, help address some of that. But if we did that, and then going back to what President Oberlander was saying is, could we offer online classes that maybe a student at Central needs to can't get it there, but they could take our online class. And when we have the same type of reciprocal agreement that we have with, I know this is an awful lot, but, but with, that we have currently with Sheridan. That says, okay, with Central, we'll split that, would that, would that be the case that we would split that revenue fifty-fifty or is that revenue going to be all ours?
Chair McGrath, Trustee Palmer, um, the first part and, and Dr. Spriggs can probably allude more to. One of the things that we're really trying to do is increase our, our um, adjunct pool. And so we're actively looking that we don't have one person that always teaches psychology. So we're trying to expand the number of people and then also provide more opportunities. In an ideal world, if we were able to offer those and once they're standalone, that was go, would go into what we call the Y-class system. And so anyone across the state could take a course. And those are hundred percent, zero percent shares. So for example, let's say hypothetically, in the summer, we had stats twenty-ten online. Um, students all across the state could apply to those or enroll. And the, the college would recoup all of those, all of those, those pieces. Ideally, that's where we want to get to a point where our online courses, we can market those not only within Campbell County and our schools, but statewide and potentially even um, out of state. My former institution, we offered courses in white class. We had students from Colorado that took courses that paid out-of-state tuition to get a, a stats twenty-fifty in the summer that they could transfer. But I mean, you're up there.
Oh, no.
Central Wyoming College.
I don't know if that was a high school or.
Just a comment that I, and I'm, I'm very pleased to see that. I just think that again, we have and I, and we want to make sure we always protect our full-time faculty and, and we continue to increase that. But I think there's a real potential for adjunct. I think that individuals though are a little apprehensive. A little nervous if I might say about how do I become an adjunct faculty? What's the time commitment? And, and what do I have to do in, in terms of preparation? So I think if, if nothing else, if we were to offer programming that allowed individuals from the community to come in and say, I want to be in, how do I, how do I become an adjunct faculty member? You know, it's just, you know, and, and just to be able to offer that. Because I think potentially some of those adjunct could become full-time. If they really have that passion for, let's say, economics or, or uh, political science, accounting, any of those. Because of the number of, of talented individuals, I'll say that reside in this, in this area, this district.
You're correct.
Trustee Williams. Let's say I'm a teacher, professor. And I should teach a course in the creation of the universe. And a student can go online and get the same course. Do we talk to that student and say, hey, you know, you're going to get a lot more out of the class if you take it physically than if you go online? So do we encourage those kids to take, uh, those students to take the physical classes in the classroom class?
That's a trick question. Um, theoretically, the online courses are supposed to be the same and the same offerings. So I would approach it more in terms of what would be their learning preference. Do they want to be in a class with other people? Do they have time to meet two days a week, three days a week at these times? And I think that's a harder question because for the most part, the students that come to us from high school have been in face-to-face classes, so they know what that is. And I think it's sometimes difficult for people who are first taking an online course because there's a lot of personal responsibility in taking that course and being successful. And so I don't necessarily want to say we would tell them or advise them to take one over the other because it's really sometimes impossible to take a face-to-face class at nine in the morning if you have a full-time job. Or if you've got children that you have to watch. And so I think that the online courses are options that are really good and online courses that are really good are pretty much the same as face-to-face. And so I think um, I'm going to answer it that way because it depends on the person. I mean, we would and the trick part is, we would love them to be face-to-face in our classes. Because that would increase our fill rate, that would increase the traffic on campus. There's a lot of positive things for that. I mean, it's a college community and you get that social interaction with people. And it's a better experience for younger people to meet other younger people. So the other, one other problem that you didn't bring up are some of our athletes who have um, trouble getting to class on a certain, not getting there, but taking a class at a certain time. And so sometimes it just works out better that you can take the class online because if you have to travel, you can still do the class while you, you were on a bus or at the airport.
To international student athletes, they can only take one online course. Otherwise they have to.
Yeah. So the other thing that Roger alluded to were hybrid courses. And hybrid courses are something that we are looking at. Um, I don't believe at this time we offer any, but what that means um, is that fifty to fifty-one percent of the classes offered face-to-face and the other percentages offered online. So the faculty meets with the student half the time. And the other half is more like um, guided study and guided work online. So that's another option we're looking at.
Is there data out there on, back to my question, you're taking an online class, you're taking a physical class? Exactly the same curriculum. Is there a data out there in relationship to how much do I learn on the online class compared to the physical class in terms of testing? So what will test higher, the physical class or the online class?
Roger, can you answer that? I, and I don't know the answer to that because it's hard to do a study because you'd be looking at two different people.
Chair McGrath, Trustee Williams, great question. Um, globally, much of the, the data uh, nationally shows that students perform better grade-wise in face-to-face versus online. Um, just because some of the dynamics, one way to measure their learning and as we move forward, we have course outcomes that are common. We have program outcomes that are common. And so as we gather that data, we could look at sections, let's say we have an O one, we have thirty and we're able to look at those. Let's say we have five face-to-face and five online. That we could look at some comparative results and say, are students, how are students doing? Indeed. And then look at that longitudinally to see if there's patterns. But at a course level, the, the key would be that you have some common assessments, you have common measures, and then you're able to compare apples to apples.
Excellent.
You're welcome.
All right, back to your presentation.
Okay, um, so I think some of the other things that we're looking at, if we did have more faculty, more staff, we would probably need some facility evaluations to see how we could best use the, the rooms we have, the offices we have. And I think that's a consideration. The other one is technology. Um, for some of the courses that would move to us, we might have to increase the technology in some of the classrooms. Um, and that might also include some of the professional development for faculty and some of the support for students as well. The course scheduling is always um, an issue and that's, you know, the purview of a dean is to live in course schedules. Because um, you have to make sure that every instructor has a full-time load every semester. And that, that matches the courses that are being offered. And so it does take a little bit of work and I hope over the next two years, we will perfect that. So um, like you said, we would need to make sure that we advise students and let them know the options over the next couple of years. And so most of this is not going to happen this coming fall, just because we are still connected. And I'm going to call it Sheridan because I can't get all the letters right. Okay. And so um, we are going to keep advising and having students know the options. And, and we do ask them, you know, what's your learning preference? And a lot of times, the the online classes are fabulous, depending on the teacher, depending how it's offered. Um, and the same is true for face-to-face. And so we will continue to advise the students. And as I said, we are going to be looking at developing hybrid courses and working through the strategies on that. Do we have another slide? Okay, so this coming year, these are some of the things that we do want to start looking at because um, this next year is going to be um, a year to work towards where we want to end up in the next year when we are totally independent. And so as you have already asked, addressing what the students want and need, the modalities that they prefer. Even the times, I think that that's something that would be really helpful for us to know. Um, I know that uh, we don't offer a lot of classes later in the day. And that by, might be an option for some students. So I think we want to make sure we know what the students want and what they would attend. Um, we want to reduce the, the enrollment of the, I'm going to call them the Gillette, I mean, the Sheridan courses by twenty-five percent. Which means we're trying to get some more students back into ours and increase our fill rates as well. Advising, I talked about that. Um, several teachers have already indicated that they would like to work on hybrid courses. Just because it's um, an option that is not terrible. I mean, it gives the students a chance to have the, the best of both worlds. Is that they meet with the class and they, and if they're here in town on campus, then they can meet with the students on that second day or the third day, depending on how you split up the hybrid. Any questions on that one? That's a funny one. Um, again, for courses that are underloaded and not at capacity and faculty that are underloaded, we would make sure that that doesn't typically happen. Um, it's rare that a faculty is underloaded, but if and when that happens, um, it's great for me. Because they would be able to do things outside of teaching, maybe curriculum development or working with some of the concurrent teachers, et cetera. And the other one, the la, the last one is one of our strategic plan is to increase um, the program growth. In all of our courses and all of our programs by three percent. Yes.
Do we have sufficient advisors to take on this emphasis on advising?
That's a good question, trustee Anderson. Um, we do have several advisors, full-time advisors. Um, but we also utilize um, faculty advisors. And so every faculty has a they call it an advisor load. And um, if it's um, students in a program like criminal justice, typically that instructor is the advisor for those students. And so their um, faculty have about forty to fifty advisees on a list. And so um, it's interesting because sometimes the students come to the advisors at the last minute or when they're desperate. And um, that's, that's a sad situation because we want to make sure that the faculty or the advisor, whichever one is the advisor meets with those students so that they know exactly the best way to navigate through their program. So we think we have enough advisors, but um, I think that it's one of those things that it's hard to measure. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that because.
I would just say is we'll begin to look at migrating these over, potentially looking at who their current advisor, some have Sheridan advisors. And then the implication of adding those who, who would take those students.
But that's a really good point. Any other questions for me?
Anything else? Carter, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Humphrey, appreciate you. Soon to be done. Moving on to uh, Student Center Report, Tiffany and I'm Maro.
Hey, guys. I'm a little sick, so my voice might be a little off. So if you can't hear me, I can repeat anything for you. Good afternoon. I'd like to start off by sharing that Gil and I, Gil is our Student Senate liaison. Um, we have just returned from a leadership conference in Orlando, Florida. We did a lot of networking with campuses from all across the country. The trip went great. The weather was beautiful and we had the opportunity to learn a lot of things. One of the biggest lessons I walked away with was the importance of always putting yourself out there and always being prepared. You truly never know when you might meet someone, maybe in an elevator, who could change your life in an instinct. And in those moments, you may only have three to five seconds to make a first strong, a strong first impression. Another takeaway was hearing new ideas from other schools and how they support their students. We're excited to bring some of those concepts back to our campus and we plan to develop them further as we prepare for our next presentation to you. The Student Senate has also recognized a growing need for food security. Not only with the holidays coming up, but especially with the impact of the recent government shutdown. In response, we've created a signup sheet and so far, five organizations have partnered with us to, have partnered with us. Together, we will be assembling fifteen meal boxes to be handed out the Monday and Tuesday prior to break. These boxes will include non-perishable items, making ingredients, oven-safe containers, and simple instructions for preparing the meals. Our goal is to support our students and make their holidays just a little bit easier. We're also excited to help at the upcoming Christmas at the college event and we're looking forward to being a part of that celebration. Yesterday afternoon, I had the opportunity to speak to the city council where Dr. Oberlander introduced me. I shared my perspective as a student and spoke about the many ways this college has supported my growth. I was definitely nervous, but I got through it and I'm grateful for that experience. Looking ahead, the Student Senate is already planning for the spring semester. We've set aside dates for food drives, career closet flash pickups and several other senate events that we're excited to bring to campus. Another thing that I'd like to add that I wasn't able to put on here was, a couple of weeks ago, the Student Senate um, partnered with our mentors. So it was a little mentor with their mentee um, event that we had. Um, I had come up with the idea, I wanted to get together and not have it be like a professional meeting, kind of get everybody out of their comfort zone, which was really fun. Um, Dr. Oberlander was there, Spriggs, Ellie, um, Anna was there and Humphrey. So it was really fun. Um, we had a collectivity. Our advisor set it up for us. It was very competitive. Um, I learned that a lot of these guys outside of the comfort zone are very competitive. But it was fun to see them that way. It was fun not having to be nervous and have to be professional around them. So it was fun to get to do that. In closing, dreams that are written down can be developed into goals, which turn into an action plan that becomes a larger vision. Thank you for your time and thank you for your continued support of our students and our work. And I'm open to any questions.
Well done. Excellent job. Yes, Trustee Palmer, so can you just tell us a little bit about yourself? Where are you from? What's your major study, a study of major?
So I'm originally from Utah. Right now, I'm, I'm currently sophomore here. I'm a first-generation student. I'm on the women's soccer team, and I'm on, working on my pre-med track. So hopefully get into the medical field. As of right now, I'm not quite sure where I'm going to be going after this, but I'd like to transfer it to a four-year. Besides that.
Well done. Thank you.
Be safe driving home.
All right, moving on to old business. Dr. Oberlander, the county building and property transfer update.
Chairman McGrath, trustees, the county has received the updated packet that you approved last board meeting. That was received on the twenty-fourth of October. It is my understanding we will be scheduled for the agenda on December second or the sixteenth, because we are anxiously awaiting news that we're on the institutional actions committee. And I'm sure we haven't heard yet, or Dr. Spriggs would have stopped the meeting to let us know. But other than that, there is no update that I have. Legal counsel, any updates from your, your colleague?
Well, then let's move into HLC update.
Chair McGrath, trustees, as you are aware, we've received the draft reports, and as of right now, do we have the final report, Dr. Spriggs?
Based on my email or text message.
Back into our inboxes. So as soon as Dr. Spriggs and I receive the final draft, we will certainly release that to the trustees first, and we will have it by Friday when we gather the campus together for our Thanksgiving luncheon, and we'll certainly share that information. What I will tell you is that the report is just phenomenal. What we have accomplished, what our faculty and staff and administrators and trustees have accomplished in this short amount of time is exceptional. And so we look forward to sharing what the recommendation is and a little bit more detail once the report, once we have it finalized. But as soon as we get it, I will forward it right out to you. I haven't answered any other questions that you may have.
Questions for Dr. Oberlander? As always, thank you. Well done for, to everybody, you know, we had a nice celebration after the visit. It was a lot of fun. It was really neat, and it was great to see everybody. So, thank you.
My pleasure. In December, we'll be ready to run out the next phase. We did that with the Wyoming Community College Commission and the vice presidents, Mr. Humphrey as well. But we just haven't had time to articulate that out into an illustration or formalize it yet. So in December, you'll see that next.
Chicago at the beginning of December.
I hope we're in Chicago on September second.
All right. Anything else? Moving on, Chair, moving on to the Officer Nominations Committee, that is myself. I have asked Trustee Palmer to help me with that, and we will bring forth our slate of officers at the December meeting. So we, you know, talked a little bit to some and moved forward, but we will be ready for elections in, in December. Okay, moving on to new business. First reading of policy three thousand point three eight, naming of college places, Director Gross.
Thank you, Chair McGrath, trustees. So the foundation board has been working very hard on developing a naming policy for GCCD as well as a procedure and how we name those spaces. We need to keep a few things in mind, of course. A lot of times, naming opportunities are tied to financial contributions. That's why it's important that the foundation and the college work hand-in-hand when we're, when we're talking about naming rights. So before you today, I believe, is the policy. It's a very generic policy that just basically outlines, you know, the fact that the foundation will work very closely with the college president, as well as the Board of Trustees to make sure that we're honoring current and future donors and doing what's in the best interest for Gillette Community College District. So that's what's before you now, and I was unsure, President Oberlander, if, after that, if we talk about the naming rights then for the NZ Building?
Only the policy is on.
So only the policy?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It is on the agenda to talk about those. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, so I can talk about that after the policy, or I can keep talking, whatever you prefer me to do.
Why don't you go ahead and keep talking, and then we'll, we'll take action on it.
Okay, all right, perfect. So before you or in your packets, you also received something that the foundation board has also been working very hard on, and that are, that is, the name, the recognition opportunities for the new NZ Building. MOA Brandon Dagel with MOA was very helpful with this. There's a couple of things to keep in mind when you're looking at naming spaces in a new building. Square footage is certainly a part of that, as well as what the donor value is. So for instance, a space that's very visible, that's going to be seen by people the minute they walk in the door, that's going to be used a lot. Obviously, there's going to be more donor value for a space like that than a space that would not be so frequently used. So there's a lot of things that go into that when we're, when we're looking at dollar amounts for these naming opportunities. So these have been vetted by the foundation board. They approved these in their October meeting. And so before you now is what the foundation board proposes. I also verified the quantities of all these different rooms. So for now, based on version eleven of the MOA drawings, these are the correct quantities for the different rooms over there for the classrooms, et cetera. So with that, I would entertain any questions.
So for the board, the, your handout, the NZ Center, you know, recognition opportunities, I believe that's just informational. We're not taking action on that today. I don't have it on my agenda that I, right? So just so you guys know, that if we're, do we have to ratify that at some point in time? So next month, obviously, if everybody gets through that, we'll put it back on the agenda for next month.
And I guess two, Mr. Important order is that this is the first reading of the policy. So we'll have a chance to have further discussion, second reading, which will come back, I presume, in supper. But I did have one question about you.
Yes.
And I didn't, I didn't total these up, Director Gross, but if you were to total up this proposed, what, what does that, what does that amount to? These, I mean, if, if you look at all these naming and if they went at the, at the rates that you have them proposed, what would that total be?
It's over five million dollars. I believe it was around five point eight two. But then, when we made these kind of last-minute adjustments on the classroom quantities, it might have adjusted a little bit. So I'll have to work that out. I apologize. I don't have that readily available, but I know it's, it is over the five million dollars, which is the, the commitment the foundation has made to the, the board for fundraising for the building.
All right, so now circling back to three thousand point three eight.
I move to approve policy three thousand point three eight, naming of college places.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved by Trustee Anderson and seconded by Trustee Williams to approve the first reading, policy three thousand point three eight, naming of college places. I open it up for discussion on that. Any questions or thoughts or on the document that was submitted? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, first reading of policy four thousand point one four, ethical recruitment, student affairs, Vice President Spriggs.
Chair McGrath, trustees, before you have policy four thousand point one four, ethical standards of recruitment and standards of student affairs, this is part of the federal compliance, as well as HLC, of course, has established guidelines to ensure that our recruitment, admissions, financial aid, enrollment processes is done in an ethical manner. So you'll see the references attached from federal regulations thirty-four CFRs, such as, that's our program participation agreement that we'll have with Department of Ed. That says pretty much these programs that we'll have listed are actually set forth at each campus, each site, in a manner that's consistent across the board. This policy, of course, examines not only the employees, but third-party representatives and agents who participate in activities that are student-facing. Okay, as well as our marketing, that we have truth in marketing, there's nondiscrimination, it's accurate, there's transparency, as well as our protection of privacy, and of course, any type of compliances with any regulations. So the policy pretty much just states that we're going to do what we're supposed to do and what we say we're going to do, as well as adhere to particular codes of conduct. As part of this procedure, later on, we have actually embedded certain organizations, such as NASBA, financial aid associations, counseling associations, as well as admissions associations. As people are coming on board, they will actually adhere and understand the code of conduct in each of those particular organizations as to the ethical standards. So much more within the, of course, the procedure as we move.
Excellent.
Trustee Palmer. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Spriggs, does this, is this also, or is there a role of the NJCAA in this process when we talk about recruitment?
Yes, in JCWA as well as an IRA. That was some of the evidence that we actually set forth as part of the federal regulation, that those practices are consistent. So each of those areas has their own code of conduct. As I said, each department pretty much has its own national organization that represents, and that's part of the procedure would be within here.
So then my follow-up is then NIL. What role does NIL play in this, if any?
That would be part of NJCAA.
My understanding is it falls under there, you know, not, much like the NCAA on the Division One and Division, you know, falls under their purview and fall under the purview of NJCAA.
Yeah, I, I, I'm still trying to wrap my head around all that, and so I, I just, yeah, so I, I think.
Whole new world.
Thank you.
Excellent. Then I'm going to turn to motion to approve policy four thousand point one four. So it's been moved by Trustee Smith and seconded by Trustee Anderson to approve first reading of policy. I said I'm going with Anderson. It's been moved by Trustee Smith, seconded by Trustee Anderson to approve first reading of policy four thousand point one four, ethical recruitment, student fares. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to first reading of policy three thousand point one eight, capitalization threshold update, Vice President Lars.
Good afternoon, Chair McGrath and trustees. Couple of requests for you today. The first one is to change the threshold for equipment from five thousand to ten thousand. So the Office of Management and Budget has changed the threshold from five thousand to ten thousand. So any grant equipment that we buy can't be capitalized unless it's ten thousand or more, to avoid having two different thresholds for grant and not grant. We're requesting that we change from five thousand to ten thousand in our asset capitalization policy.
By Trustee Palmer, who I have seconded, Trustee Wassberger. Excellent. We move by Trustee Palmer, seconded by Trustee Wassberger to approve the first reading of policy update three thousand point one eight, capitalization threshold, threshold, excuse me. Any questions? Pretty straightforward. Excellent. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you, Vice President.
Great, thank you.
Now, moving on to approval for credit card company, Vice President Lars.
Great. So when we first started here, we were with First National Bank, still are with them. They hold a lot of our funds, and the credit cards were set up with them. They outsourced the management of the credit cards to Easy Business Credit Card, is what it's called. If I want to give a new credit card to someone or change someone's limits, I get in there and do the work. But, and it's easy to use for that, but there's no reporting. So every month, my business office team has to get down, get reports from everyone and handkey all the expenses. So if we have twenty-five credit cards and each person charges even just ten things each month, that's a lot of keying, a lot of tracking receipts, a lot of tracking people down. We will still have to get receipts. We will still, you know, make sure we're doing a good job verifying all the expenses, but it will save all the handkeying if we move to UMB, which also is what the state uses for their agencies for credit cards. So we're gonna latch, we would like to latch on to that program, and there is a credit back. Sorry, oh, there's a fact sheet in your, in your packet. There's also a credit back, right? We'll get cash back. We'll get cash back at the end of the year.
Excellent.
We need a motion. We do. So move.
I got you this time. I got it. Move by Trustee Williams and seconded by Trustee Day to approve the change in the credit card banking to UMB Financials. Questions?
Have we discussed the change with First National Bank?
Uh, no, we have not, not yet.
Are we going to?
Sure, yes, I'd be happy to call them. I, I don't think that they will care, because I have to call them a lot when things go works away. I need them to, so.
Any other questions? Please say aye. Those opposed, nay? Thank you. Moving on, Foundation Board Member Ratification, Jake Ewing and Taylor Webb, Director Gross, welcome back.
Thank you, Chair McGrath, trustees. So the foundation board last December had a couple of directors that came off. They had fulfilled terms, and we did not fill their terms at that time. We had decided to form a governance committee, which we started early this calendar year. So we wanted to wait to find new directors to fill those spots until we had the governance committee up and running, which we've done that. From the governance committee, now we have an offshoot of that committee called a nominating committee. So we've been doing a lot of work this year on finding new directors, and we're being very conscious of who we are inviting to join the foundation board. We want to make sure we have a good variety of board members from different sectors of the community. Also want to make sure that the folks that we're asking to join our board are going to be engaged and fully engaged in the mission of the college and the foundation. So with that, the foundation approved two new board members. The first one being Jake Ewing, who is the president, CEO of Van Ewing Construction. And then also Taylor Webb, who is with Hilltop Wealth Management, which is part of Hilltop National Bank. She is here in Gillette. She serves right now on the United Way for Converse County, Campbell County, and I think Natrona County is in on that. So she has a lot of really good background with nonprofit organizations. And Jake has served on the Chamber Board and the AGC Board or the NUKA Board, I believe, as well. So we're asking for your ratification, and we're eager to get these directors on board.
I move to approve the membership of Jake Ewing and Taylor Webb, Foundation Board.
It has been moved by Trustee Anderson and seconded by Trustee Williams to ratify the new foundation board members, Jake Ewing and Taylor Webb. Any discussion? Welcome to the board. Thank you for their service. Thank you, Director Gross. I did receive my handout, just as a side note, for early April tenth, right? Is that for your?
Yes, for the casino, yes, for the casino night, and this year we have a Pirates theme. It's going to be super fun.
So. Well, that's from Pirates of Caribbean. Moving on to the committee reports, Bochy's update, Trustee Anderson, Trustee Day, and of course, Executive Director, Mr. Wassberger.
Trustee Day and I are turning it over to Mr. Wassberger and Mr. Humphrey, maybe?
You're yielding your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank Trustee Day and Trustee Anderson for their time, and I'm going to give you this report very quickly. We met October fourteenth at three o'clock in the afternoon, and we had a thirty-minute meeting because the Campbell County School District Board of Trustees had a meeting in Wright that they were traveling to. So we got our meeting done. At that meeting, we presented information from an exit survey that we did. So we got our meeting done. At that meeting, we presented information from an exit survey that we did. But the things that I wanna tell you, we have done since that meeting, the first of November, I started meeting with students. To, uh, approve their pronghorn advantage scholarships. And I have met with two hundred and twenty-five students so far and approved them. Um, it's amazing that we have twelve students from Wright. And you need to remember that Wright has only one concurrent enrollment college class. And so these students are doing it all online. Um, so there's twelve in Wright and you can take the, um, number left and split it in half between Campbell County High School and Thunder Basin High School, about the same number. And that, that's about the first time that's happened because Thunder Basin has always led Campbell County High School. And that's, that's not the case. They're literally the same this year. The one thing that I do want to tell you is that there is a young lady by the name of Blair Woodward. That is very close to earning her associate's degree. Um, and she will be the very first student from Wright High School to win an associate's degree before she graduates from high school. So she is on track to do that. Also, in October, we had our M Shaw class. Uh, we have twenty-eight students take advantage of that. I budgeted for sixty students to take that. And so we are going to offer another class in January for those students who missed it the first time. So that is coming up. Also, I have granted ten scholarships in the Pronghorn Drive Program, the CDL. And for the very first time, we have three students at Wright High School. They will graduate in December. They are going, two of them are going to do the course, the CDL course in December. One of them is going to do it in January. They will graduate in May. And three students from Wright High School have their commercial driver's license. So those, that's the exciting stuff that we wanna talk about. But now we wanna go to our research report. And first of all, um. Let's, let's go to the handout I gave you that says Wyoming Community College Commission. Okay, and turn to the second to the last page. And I wanna discuss that information. This is a research report that was done for the Wyoming Community College Commission. And it was released in, yes, was released in, uh, September, I believe, or October, October first, twenty twenty-five. And you can see, starting in the very top on page seven. You can see the numbers of students statewide in the dual enrollment headcount. And you can see that over the last ten years, it has increased from in twenty fifteen to two thousand sixty-eight students. To twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, to three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight students, okay? And one of the things that the bottom chart shows you is the same information in the number of credits that students have earned. And they have gone from twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, ten thousand nine hundred fifty credits. And in this last academic year, twenty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-six credits. So what I'm trying to point out and on the very next page is. I was under the assumption that we were the, the only organization that was increasing students like we've seen in the last few years. It is a statewide phenomenon. Okay, so this is going on at all community colleges. It's not just here. And I wanted to point that out to you. Now, let's move to our exit survey. And I handed out the, the questions that I gave to each student. Who graduated with their associate's degree last spring. This document was drawn up by Dr. Humphrey. And it is to help with our accreditation, uh, with the Higher Learning Commission. And so you can see the six questions that are on there. All twenty, twenty-two, I believe, or twenty-three students completed that. And we compiled that. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Humphrey because he compiled that. And that is the slideshow here, but it will be on your TV, I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Wassburger. Hopefully that doctor will be, uh, December nineteenth.
Let's go.
I'll find out. If I don't come back, you'll know. So what we did is we gathered, as Mr. Wassburger said, some perception. Uh, quality data about our concurrent students that were graduating with the degree and, and about their perceptions of the college. And their experience in concurrent and or dual. And so, uh, we worked together, we collected these and then we compiled them this past summer, late summer. So the next slide, I believe, is the first question. Uh, so again, we went through these. Ella, you can, but there we go. So question one, ask them about their, their experience. And as you can see, we, we asked them some specific things about making the presentation, working with others, discussing ideas. Looking at the, the flavor of the courses. And so you saw across the board, like the one in the far right, uh, working on a paper, projects that required integrating ideas. Or information from various sources, very well aligned to our institutional outcomes. And as you can see, seventy-six percent of those, those twenty-one students felt that they were, they were challenged, that they had to work on projects. That required them not just to, to ergitate information, but to be able to analyze and synthesize information. So those are very po- very positive things. Um, you can see in some areas that we, we, um, looked in terms of their participation with others. And so forth. And, and this information, some of our lower scores are things that we can come back and we can visit about. And will visit about within the academic areas. So you can see that's one of the strengths in this here. We put it on a Likert scale, a, a four-point Likert scale. And just categorized students and their perceptions. And then, uh, calculated the percentage of each of those ratings. Uh, question two. And please jump in anytime if you have any questions. Um, the second question. Okay, question two is how much does, uh, Gillette College emphasize in terms of the following? So what we really looked at were really two indicators, providing support. So when we looked at, are you provided, uh, advising, are you provided academic support? All of those different types of things. And as you can see, over sixty percent of the students felt that they were supported to be successful in their courses. And that fifty-two percent felt that they had been given, uh, advising and planning, uh, help as they go. And so it sort of parallels, uh, some of the things we talked before with Dr. Carter. How can we, how can we help advise those concurrent students and involve our faculty and our staff more in those primarily? In the past, those have went through the counselors at the high school and the position, Dr. Spriggs, I cannot remember. Uh, Geneva's position, but that coordinator with the high schools. So how can we get faculty more involved potentially in the future and helping those students? Not that that's a terrible number, but boy, we'd like to see a little bit higher, uh, amount moving forward. Our third question, um. Is about what best reflects your, uh, plan. So we wanted to know where are they going to go after they graduate? Of those twenty-one, uh, eighty-five percent, uh, indicated that they were going to four-year, four-year institutions. Uh, two of the students indicated a two-year community college and one student really wasn't sure what they were going to do. If that gives us an idea, how can we maybe capture more of those students? And some strategies that we look in terms of our melt rate of when they leave the school district and they enroll. In, uh, Campbell or, uh, Gillette College, right?
I think one of, we talked a little bit earlier about sleds. One of the reasons sleds is important is so, three years from now, we could go back and look. Eighteen of these students said that they were gonna enroll in a four-year, did they? And did they complete? Or did they take another pathway? So that's what sleds helps us see is all of that longitudinal data.
Yeah, we'll be able to really check, track those students by their WISER ID, their identification number and find out where they land. Next slide, um, thank you, Ellie. Uh, question four, looked at the time enrolled. Uh, did it prepare you for your future plans? We had twenty of the twenty-one respond. Uh, sixty-five percent of the students felt that we were preparing them for their next step in their educational career. Which is a positive, uh, in terms of what we're doing in our courses and, and so forth. It would be really interesting to, to, uh, survey those same twenty after their first year of, of post-secondaryish. After they completed year. Uh, question five really was open-ended in terms of some of the, the things that they shared. And so I, I highlighted some of the major themes or threads that they, uh, were tagged in terms of looking at their, um, their responses. One of the, the highest one was, uh, they really, that they didn't, uh, anticipate that there was a higher quality of work. Forcing them to work harder. And so that's, that's a, that's a good thing, that the courses were rigorous and that they challenged them. Um, some of them shared, uh, their high workload. One of the things is that many of those stu-, well, all of them are full-time high school students. Some of those are taking up to twelve hours per semester. So not only a full-time high school student, they're a full-time college student. And so that workload is, is a, is a big change for them. Uh, helping them choose their courses or degrees and their planning and, and schedule, that comes back to, how can we better advise? Uh, students about the courses. If I take this, does it transfer to the college that I want to go? And having those conversations, helping them understand the balance of work and so forth. And so those were some of the things that, that were mentioned in terms of our major themes and threats. Um, I think the last part of the presentation, we just sort of, oh, excuse me, please provide recommendations. Uh, they, they suggested that can we incorporate them in terms of study habits and strategies, time management? Uh, how can we, uh, include them or incorporate them in many of the efforts that are occurring in the student success and access departments? That we're doing, the tutoring services, how can we help better connect and communicate the services that are provided on campus? Are they aware of those? And are they using those? Uh, encouraging more peer, group peer activities, uh, that was an interesting one. Uh, more online support from instructors and availability. Again, uh, some of those students, it may have been the first time they took an online course. How do you navigate a Canvas page? How do you communicate with your instructor? How do you submit an assignment? And how do you navigate those modules of all those things that are within that online environment? I really liked the one, the fifth one down, month of meeting counselors and co- and college personnel about transferability. And how can we continue that ongoing conversation and, and presence rather than maybe just showing up at, at the beginning of the semester and the end of the semester? So building those relationships and communication, so.
Question then, or, or, or thought, do you think some of this, again, if it's online? Most of these kids have spent their entire academic career with a teacher and somebody going, this is what you need to do and this is when you need to do it. And now, that's not there. It's on your own time and when you wanna get it done. And so I could see the, you know, just of having two daughters that went through it, the, the merit of some sort of meeting with the college personnel and or. Cause there's nobody there to say to keep your thumb on you like there is in the high school classroom, I mean, or, or if you're taking it, you know, in person. So I can see the, the thought process there.
Uh, thank you, Chair McGrath. I would agree, you know, how can we help students and also faculty of communicating those expectations? Uh, you know, we, I, and only I remember a student coming in at the beginning of the semester that was struggling to even get to their Canvas page and understand what a Canvas page is. And so how can we help communicate, educate them? Uh, also time management. Um, some of those you may have a three-week, a unit. And, you know, I always used to tell students when I taught, do not wait until the night before to try to do three weeks of work. And it usually doesn't turn out very well. So helping them, sometimes it does.
As a grandma who spent Sunday night. Dropping old maple leaf things down as my grandson timed them for his biology lab. Which was due Monday.
So based on this feedback, which is great for the, you can actually get from the student, what, what? Or how are you going to approach adopting to be concrete, concrete things to help them? Things that you were thinking about implementing or you're just synthesizing right now, right now? I guess my drive would be is you got some concrete feedback and some good feedback. So what things are we actually gonna prioritize and then implement? To see if that impacts then year to year with the survey.
Uh, Chair McGrath, trustee Wassburger, our goal is the week after the semester ends is discussing this with our schools. Dissecting it, uh, involving, if we can, some of the student affairs people. And how, what are our strategies moving forward in the spring as these students enroll? Again, cause you know, that will be in, how, how can we test in to pick out the things that we really need to emphasize? Let's just say that we're going to set a schedule of where we're gonna meet monthly. Who's gonna do that? When's it going to occur? And really putting some concrete actions from this and sharing this and, and discussing with the deans and schools. Coming up with our recommendations, bringing those forward with Dr. Spriggs. And then other entities, how can we involve them with a little bit of an action plan moving forward for the spring? And then we can measure, you know, if we assess students again, and we begin to longitudinally, are we seeing some trends and patterns?
Exactly.
Great question.
Something was gonna come out of this.
And I, you know, it's not just doing it. So what are you gonna do with the information?
Trustees, I think the other piece is we have the opportunity, there, there are, uh, enrollment requirements to become a dual student. And so there's an opportunity for us to also look at those, uh, requirements. Do they fit? Do we need to adjust? Do we need to address those? And that's in partnership with our, uh, colleagues, uh, Bochy. So certainly, Mr. Wassburger, our friends at the high school. Do those fit? Are they the right requirements for us to be following? And there's also some state statute that dictates, uh, some of the pathways for dual and concurrent. Chair McGrath, Mr. Humphrey, do we have a, and maybe this is a. Question for someone else. Do we have a short introduction to online learning module? Or something that someone who is taking an online class for the first time can take to worry about how to mo- how to navigate through Canvas? How an online class differs from an in-person class?
I'll, I'll turn that over to Mr. Wassburger. Thank you. Every student that I sign up has an orientation where the student is, uh, given a college email address. And then how to log on to their online class and, um, that happens every semester.
Chair McGrath, trustee Anderson, I think that's a good point, right? That's, that's awesome. It's a great start. And then what else can we add to that? Because if you've never had to do a post in an online course, you might not know how to do that. You might not know how to go out and pull down the resources. So it's certainly an opportunity.
That would not be just for the dual concurrent students, it should be for, for all students.
That's a great point.
Something during, I mean, convocation or something like.
I, I can speak from my own experience when I started my doctorate and I looked at the syllabus and the killer shell. It's a good thing my daughter was standing there to reassure me, like I reassured her. So, but it can be, it can be very overwhelming if you've never known.
And, yes, sir, so I see, sir, Chairman, and I understand we're under somewhat of a time constraints. I'll try and keep my questions quicker. But a couple of observations and, and I, I think that, given that fact that sleds isn't gonna be funded, uh, potentially. So in three to five years, will we be going back to these students, this particular cadre of students? And seeking that information, not if we, if we don't have students? Cause I think, I think some of the questions that are asked, you know, about the high expectation of, of what college meant and those kind of things. If they go on to a four-year school or on to another institution of higher learning, be curious to see how they compare that with, with their experience here. At Gillette College, um, and, and just to have that data. And I think the other thing is that because we're gonna have another meeting with our legislators, that I would like to see if we could have this provided to our legislators. Prior to that, or at that meeting, to talk about the impact that this has, um, certainly with our students. And then I guess maybe a question for you, Executive Director Wassburger, is that, given the, given the high, uh, high level statewide of concurrent and dual enrollment, are other institutions doing this? Are the others, the other seven community colleges doing this as well? Are they looking at this and studying this or your counterparts in the other school districts? Because I think this is very valuable to our legislators to say.
Essentially, are they asking those same, these same questions?
Or similar questions to say, hey, this is the importance of dual and concurrent enrollment. And and the funding needs to be reinstated for this, so we have this longitudinal data into the future.
Well, to answer that question, I I don't have any idea if other community colleges are doing this. We did it. And I was asked to do it because it would help us with our accreditation and Higher Learning Commission. And I still wanted to know what was going on with my kids. What's going to happen this year is we will have about between thirty and forty students graduate with their associate's degree. We're going to do the same. We're going to do this until I leave this office every year. But what I take away from those bullets is that it's customer-driven. You know, they want more customer help. And at the same time, we have to make sure we keep our classes rigorous and at the college level. So sometimes, you know, kids have to really go to work. And it's hard to learn that lesson sometime. But anyway, I'm really excited about the information we have and
So I would say a couple of things. One, thank you for having the forethought to give this information both of you and and whether you were asked to do it or had the forethought, both work very well because we know have this information and how valuable it has become. So thank you to that. And and what it will do going forward. Number two, Vice Chair was excited because she knows you'll at least have ten years of data going forward than while you remain in this position. And so you know, so.
You know, we all sit here.
Highly recommend.
As trustees and, you know, people of the audience. And you would talk about kids that had IACTs and I GPAs. But sometimes I think we forget about those kids that are struggling in school. And there's a lot of them. And and to some degree, I think there's more now than when I was in school. Simply because of all the distractions out there. And to some degree, they're fired off in school. And so as a college. And so what we're all doing, how can we approach these kids? And say, hey, there is a future for you in education. How, what can we do to help our schools? And our schools help us to get these kids. And there's a lot of them. Well, I shouldn't say a lot. But there is a pretty good percentage of kids out there that really don't know what they're going to do. Even when they're juniors and seniors, they don't know what they're going to do. So how can we help these kids make a decision which not only maybe increases our enrollment, but anyway, helps them make good decisions? And and sometimes I think we forget that we're all talking about high academic kids. But there's a lot of kids out there that could be high academic kids. But for some reason, they're just not on the right track. And so how can we approach from our college standpoint? Not only to help the school, but to help these kids. Can we bring them on campus and say, hey, look what we got? You know, because every kid has an interest, but they don't always know what and alls we have to do is say, hey, maybe we can trigger them a little bit. You know, and we all need triggered. Somehow we got triggered our life. Depending on where we're at, you know. But these kids are not getting triggered. They have no clue. They're floundering out there.
And now let me, let me give you a little success story. Just this summer, there was a graduate from Thunder Basin High School and I talked to him, encouraged him, said, hey, you need to go take the CDL. You need to get it, get in. This is what you need to do. And he did and graduated, got his through a CDL. And then I kept encouraging to to do electrical or come to college and he applied for an electrical apprentice position with a local company. It was down to two kids. One had his CDL and one did not. Who do you think got the job? He was, he came, came back to me and said, thank you, you know, thanks for encouraging me. Thanks. I got the job because I had my CDL. Now, right there to me is the success story, one of the success of this program. And it's those kids that you're you're talking about me, you know, when I was.
You know. I think we're talking about two different things here. This program is not for everybody. This program is hard. I had two daughters who enrolled in it and going, one that graduated, it's not for everybody. I'm talking about the dual concurrent. So I think we're talking about two things. I think we're talking about how do you trigger kids and make them interested in things? That's one thing. But the seat, the the dual concurrent program. It, sorry, you have to be more academically inclined or more motivated at least to want to do this. One, your grades have to to remain at a certain level. And number two, you got to want to put in the extra effort and the extra work to do this. So I I I very much appreciate your comment, Trustee Williams. I love where you're coming from on that. And 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 I think that's a, that's a total effort between the school district and certainly us at the college, but we're talking about two different things.
And we then we have two options. I guess that's what I was trying to say, too. We have the CDL program. We have to have that there and we have the dual enrollment. My son, the best thing, his comments that he gave me tied right into your feedback. His first class was, that class was a lot harder than I thought it was going to be. Which is awesome, because that's where he's going to succeed and he's going to learn to be a good student and be able to progress. So the comments that I saw from there were exactly what he he had told me at home.
Chair McGrath, I would just offer, and you asked if the college can do anything, we start in second grade. And we bring every second grader through Area fifty-nine. They get exposed to STEM, they get exposed to current technical education, they get exposed to the academic side as well. Then we bring them back as fifth graders, then they can take Verizon, then they can take summer programs. But then we also, and Travis Grub is very instrumental in this, we have two days in the fall. One is program preview day where we bring the high schoolers to the campus. And then there's also a program with NUKA and AGC, and they bring equipment to campus. And again, high school students, over two hundred and fifty of them come to campus. So we are doing those things and they're very successful programs. And we're very proud of the work that we do to encourage all students who have multiple pathways to careers to experience Gillette College.
Good comment, though, Trustee. Thank you, guys, both very much. Well done. Okay, moving on, any, I don't see any on the sheet, but any public any public comment? Okay. I'm going to go over the upcoming events because I know a lot of people leave, but November twenty-fourth, PTK, you can see it on the on the agenda. The PTK fundraiser, December fourth is Christmas at the college, six PM, Tech Center. December fifth, Skills USA Community Mixer, right here at the Tech Center, five to eight. December sixth, Skills USA Breakfast, eight to eleven, right here. And so those are your upcoming events that are that are certainly coming. Any thoughts or questions? Yes, sir.
We have two PTK fundraisers.
Sorry, two PTK fundraisers.
So one does have a closing day. Does the C's can be young raising have a closing day this?
Probably. I do not know. I know I already got my order sixteen.
Just says order now.
There is a queue order, but I don't know what it is.
And you didn't order from me. Spread my wealth.
That is that that competitiveness coming out right there. Okay, having said that, we are going to move into executive session. So I would request a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Wyoming State Statute sixteen four four oh five two on matters concerning personnel. As a side note, there probably will be action taken afterwards if anybody wants to stay around. Move into executive session. Pursuant to Wyoming State Statute sixteen four four oh five two on matters concerning personnel. Bone on this, right? Going to executive session?
Yeah.
All in favors. Those opposed, nay? Okay. We will take a five-minute break and move into. We will take a five minute break and move into.
Allegedly, it's.
So did you write this? For today's board meeting?
I did write that, yes.
Nice job.
Thank you.
David, thanks for coming back.
Of course.
All right, so we are, we're out of executive session. So at this point, I would request a motion to the exception to policy four thousand point one zero to afford the same benefit level as outlined in policy four thousand point one zero to the current director of adult basic education.
So move second.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved by trustee Williams and seconded by trustee Palmer. You didn't read it correct as I'm rolling. It's moved by trustee Williams and seconded by trustee Palmer for an exception to policy four thousand point one zero to to afford the same benefit level as outlined in policy four thousand point one zero to the current direct director of adult basic education. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. That is all, yes, sir.
Sure, just as again, just as a, as a. For those that left before you corrected the reason we went into executive session, I want to maybe just change.
Larry, did I have that back, that piece of paper on your left hand? So our, our reason for going into executive session was the wrong Wyoming statute. We actually went into executive session before, and we we modified it. State Statute sixteen four four oh five X or Roman numeral ten. Or that's Roman numeral X, but ten, to consider accepting or transferring tendering offers concerning wages, salaries, benefits, and terms of compensation. That was the correct reason for going into executive session. Any, any back clarification, trustee? Thank you. All right, we have no more business in front of us. So having said that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I second that.
All right, it's been moved by trustee Anderson, seconded by trustee Day to move to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
One, two, seven.
I do have the lyrics. Would you like to sing the part?